Well, good morning and welcome. Most of you look a little bit garagey this morning for some reason. Happy New Year. And this is the first Board of Commissioners meeting, work session meetings, of 2018. And we're looking forward to a great 2018. Glad to have everyone here this morning. And I will officially call this meeting to order at this time. If the marshal or the citizens wishing to speak, please turn off your cell phones if you have one. We are honored and privileged again to have Pastor Court Franklin here to bring us our invitations from Mount Olivet Missionary Baptist Church. And also lead us in our pledge to lead us to the flag. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's bow over to prayer. Father God, we humbly pause today to say thank you. Thank you for being a God that we can talk to, see God in front, and be empowered by. We thank you that we live in a country where we have religious freedoms. Lord, we pray for all of our elected officials from the White House to this very room. We ask that you would endow our elected officials with the wisdom of Solomon and yet give our citizens the patience of Job. Lord, as the tree has many branches, Lord, that yet it's still one tree. We know that Paulding County is made up of many different races, cultures, and political affiliations, but yet we are still one county. So, Lord, we pray that you would unite us, Lord, or that you would bring us together, make us tolerant of one another. Lord, make us charitable to one another, and we might make Paulding County the greatest county in all of the United States. Lord, we thank you for our veterans, Lord, how they served, Lord, bravely and with honor. Lord, ask that you protect our men and women who serve today, whether they serve locally, nationally, or internationally. Lord, protect them as only you can. Lord, we pray for our first responders. Protect them, Heavenly Father. Lord, give them the resources that they need, Lord, to do their job adequately and efficiently. Lord, I speak right now raises and bonuses for them, Lord, to increase, Lord, for them financially, that every need might be met. And, Lord, we pray for those who are less fortunate than all of us in this room today. We pray for the homeless, Lord, that they might find shelter. We pray for the hungry, Lord, that they might be provided food. Never let us forget, Lord, that we are our brother's keeper. But we say this prayer right now in the name of His Son, Jesus Christ, for Thine ears, the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Let us turn toward the flag and say, "Pledge." Our pledge to lead us to the flag. The United States of America. And to the Father, who hath given us one nation, one God, and give us all with virtue and justice. For all.
What a beautiful prayer to start off the new year. The minutes of the December 12th work session and also the regular board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements, we want to recognize Martin Luther King's birthday, which is...
It's funny to think about because not only was his name still on? Well, at one time, he was just a kid. Like, maybe you're a kid watching this. Well, he was a kid too. Well, maybe you're a grown-up. That's okay too. Well, our kids are welcome here. I don't discriminate. Martin Luther King grew up to be a great man, of course. But thanks for all that grace and the role while he was growing up, not everybody was treated like they were somebody. And I believe that you should treat everybody like it's the birthday. But they didn't do that. People looked at the glitter under your skin, and that's how they decided if they were friends or not. That's cool, man. That doesn't make him feel good. That doesn't make anybody feel good. But his parents helped him grow up. He went to church. He learned about love. He grew up to be a minister to help a lot of people. He knows lots of cool stuff. He helped a lot of people learn about love, too. But still, he looked around and said, "Maybe you should be better." He wanted to change things, so he did stuff. He decided, instead of spreading the hate, he would spread the love. He wanted to bring people together. Where people were hurting, he stepped in to help. He marched with them. He walked with them. He walked arm-in-arm with everyone. Sometimes he didn't go well, but he kept going. Sometimes he ended up in prison, but he kept going. Some people disliked him, but he kept going. Some days were hard, but he kept going. Love does that to just keep going, even when things are dark. And, well, I don't like this part of the story, but things did get pretty dark. Someone who didn't agree with him, shot him. He died in April of 1968. Now, get J.J. Franklin! Why are you telling us this sad story? Come on! I know, I know. I'm sorry, but it happened. I like that it happened. Now, I gotta tell you something. When things aren't awesome, it can be tough. And things will always be awesome, but your response can be. Martin Luther King's response? It was awesome. See, I just wanted us to think about this. Isn't it cool that we can change things? Like any others, anybody. He dreamed, and he changed things. And he dreamed, and he kept sharing his dreams. They became not just his dream, a lot of people's dreams. Like this one. I have a dream that will black boys and black girls join hands with white boys and white girls who become sisters and brothers. That's a pretty good dream. That's a dream like that.
I don't mean to add most of that, but I wanted to read just one paragraph of a whole page from Credit Scott King. "The Martin Luther King Jr. holiday celebrates the life and legacy of a man who brought hope and healing to America. We commemorate, as well, the timeless values he taught. He taught us through his example. The values of courage, truth, justice, compassion, dignity, humility, and service that so radiantly defined Dr. King's character and empowered his leadership. On the holiday which occurs next Monday, we commemorate the universal unconditional love and share the forgiveness and the nonviolence that empower his revolutionary spirit." Also, today, we don't have a real long meeting, and I want to take the time to recognize two of our administrative staff. They happen to be part-time workers, but they do so much to assist our Board of Commissioners and the full-time staff. So, I would like to ask for Ms. Avon Sylvie and also Erica Richter to come forward. And I know they want their picture taken with this Board of Commissioners and County Attorney. So, I'm gonna pull Erica. There she is. As has been said before, come before the firing squad. I want to, as you're coming up, Ms. Sylvie's really been with us for over two years. She used to work right out here in the lobby, but since has moved down to the adrium, where she could even have more positive effect on our citizens and our customers. She is a Paulding County resident, and she is our official receptionist downstairs now. She always gives directions to the many people that come through the doors with a smile. Very rarely do I see her when she's not smiling, so that's contagious. She helps our county clerk, Rebecca Meredith, and Senior Administrative Assistant Angela Ferris now in any number of tasks that overflow to Avon and to Erica. Before coming here, she worked 16 years at the parody shops, and before that was an affiliate relations coordinator with Turner Broadcasting Company. She is an avid reader. She loves to travel, has a lot of great travel stories, and she has one son. And to her right, the way you're facing, Ms. Erica Richter, who's only been with us since November. She is new to county government, and she is a sponge right now. She's soaking it all up. She has been Vice President of Operations, a previous employer, has her bachelor's degree in corporate finance. She also helps Rebecca and Angela in additional administrative duties. And I'll give you all a little warning. She has her SSMBV. Tell us what that is. The SSMBV is the Six Sigma Master Black Belt. Stay out of range. She has 11-year-old son Caleb. So, we just honor these people today. I think it's the first of the year. It's a good time to review our mission, vision, and values. And I do most of the emcee-ing up here. Would you read our mission?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Paulding County Board of Commissioners' mission. With unity and purpose, work to enhance citizens' quality of life by maximizing resources to make Paulding County a better place to live, work, and play.
Paul, would you do a vision?
Paulding County. The Paulding County Board of Commissioners will operate as an effective and efficient governing body on behalf of all the citizens of Paulding County to make Paulding County a permanent place to, in Atlanta, excuse me, metropolitan area, to live, work, and play.
Thank you. Lastly, under the values includes a statement and then just an acronym, H. Paulding County, Georgia is a community that is unique in the Atlanta metropolitan area with its opportunities, diverse citizenry, and recreational programs, but most of all in its heart. Paulding County Board of Commissioners honors these values. Honesty. H for honesty, equality, and openness in government. E excellence in working with all levels of government and supporting citizen involvement. The A is for accountability in order to ensure financial and personal integrity. R is for respect within the county government and to our citizens. The T is really for teamwork and transparency in order to promote quality decision-making. And at this time, I'd like to call on County Administrator Brian Baker and our recreational director, Michael Justice, to give us an update on the Silver Comet Trail after a pretty awesome snowstorm.
Good morning, Chairman of Commissioners. Just wanted to take a couple of minutes to just let you know what a spot-on job that Michael Justice, our Parks and Recreation Director, has done. Since we had the snowstorm, Michael was spot-on. He called me and he said, "We got a problem." And that problem is we've had a bunch of trees damage on the Silver Comet Trail. I know a lot of our own citizens that use that trail. I know I'm one of those. I'm an avid cyclist myself. And so, a lot of folks that come into our county that also use that trail. So, we want to get that trail up and running as soon as we can. So, Michael's done a great job of getting that done, and he's here to just tell you a little bit about it. He's actually gonna make a presentation, and he's got some video, which is pretty awesome to see. So, I'll turn it on over to him.
Thank you, sir. Board of Commissioners?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have to be honest, I didn't cut the first tree. The video and the pictures that are showing there are just a sampling of what we experienced on our portion of the Silver Comet, which runs through the county. We have about 18 miles of this trail. You know, as soon as it happened, we knew we would have some damage. You know, we had it during significant rain events. You know, a lot of ours is either on a ridge line or it's through a cut. And those areas that you see are mainly cut areas. And when that happens, the weight of the snow this time just lays those things over, small trees to some great big ones. We started on it as soon as we could, as soon as we were back at work. I say "we," I'm referring to our park staff, and assessed the trail, and there were some areas in there that we just could not get to and handle with what we had. We were very fortunate to be allowed to contract with local tree service, Ray Fletcher, Fletcher's Tree Service. If you need somebody, shameless plug here for them, but they did an outstanding job and started as soon as we called them. We started getting phone calls from citizens, and, you know, the cop portion of it's already cleared, you know, two days later. What are we doing? Kind of wanted to show you what we were dealing with there. The worst areas that we had were west. The last road crossing that you have in Paulding County is at Nick Fearsom Church Road. It's about four miles from there to Rushing Mountain Tunnel, to give you a landmark. I would say that 80% of that area had downed trees on it. We're not talking about a few. We're talking about hundreds of trees here. It did take us a little while, eight days to be exact, I believe, going from, as soon as the guys came in, for as long as they could here in those days. During the middle of this, we named a brand-new superintendent of parks. His name is Eddie Smith. He's been with us for a long time. He stepped right into the middle of that. He and his staff, along with Mr. Fletcher and his tree service. I can't thank them enough for the work that they did in getting the trail back open. You can still see some debris out there alongside the trail, and we'll get that chipped up and removed just as soon as we can, but the trail is clear. They'll continue to monitor that and see if we've got some, you know, some other trees that continue to fall. But just wanted to show you and the folks in here this morning a little bit of what we were dealing with there. We apologize for the delay, but we appreciate your patience while we were working through to get that back open for you. So, again, thanks to the parks maintenance staff and Eddie Smith and the guys from the tree service for getting that done for us.
Are you playing that drum?
Yes, sir. A little bit hairy up in there with all those, you know, little tight sidelines and some tall trees in there. We didn't crash it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the board. Under invited guests, we are privileged to have Ms. Mayoral St. Perry, Chanauchi Technical and Adult Education Director for the Paulding County School District. And she's gonna speak regarding the recent Paulding County Career Academy PCCA grant. Mayoral, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me here. I appreciate your invitation. First of all, I got a promotion while you introduced me, so that was good. I'm part of this school district. We have partnered with the whole community, really, to work on this project, and it's really with great honor to announce that we did receive a grant to start a Paulding College and Career Academy. This will suppose the collaboration of secondary education business partners in the area and our school district to give students opportunities that they didn't get in the past. So, I'm here today to just give you a little overview on what that academy is going to be and really why we are even pursuing to start an academy in Paulding County. As you know, we are the 13th largest district in the state of Georgia with almost 30,000 students. But our rate of free and reduced lunch is quite high. Although we're one of the largest districts, we also have an economic development, economically disadvantaged, sorry, population that is quite high, which stays right now at a 42%. Although we are that 13th largest district, admittedly so, we sit almost at the bottom. Out of 190 districts in the state of Georgia, we are 137th in local revenue per student. So, that's usually, you know, larger districts who set up a lot higher in that list at the state level. We have seen many different ways of trying to get our students ready for the workforce and for post-secondary education, but we're feeling that we are missing the ball in some spots. We have collaborated with Chanauchi Technical College in particular, but also Georgia Highlands, and we have partnered also with Kennesaw State on this project. We have had partnered with the Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development, Business District in the district, as well as elected officials. I know some of you have been at our meetings, even at the presentations, and we are very thankful for that. Most of our inhabitants in Paulding County go outside of Paulding to work, and what we're trying to do is get our students prepared so they can stay in Paulding and work in Paulding. Get them the skills they need so they can fill the jobs that we have in the county. Because out of those jobs that we have in the county, 60% of those jobs are filled by non-habits of Paulding County. So, we want to keep our students, we're gonna keep our population working in Paulding. And that's part of the initiative with all these common, all these businesses that partner with us, and here's a representation of some of them. The actual academy will, the Technical College system of Georgia is giving us $2 million. That's the actual amount of the grant. What we are planning on doing is remodeling New Hope Education Center, which is what you see right there, like the front of where, really where the bus loop will go. You're familiar with the Old Avenue and Manor. That's what the New Hope Education Center is. We're gonna remodel that location, and this is a rendering from the architect and what we're hoping it will look like. It's gonna be a place where students will be able to take classes that they cannot take in the regular high schools. They can also take dual-enrollment classes, as well as we will have a meeting spot for the businesses in the area as well. We'll have community rooms where, you know, business owners can come in and meet with their, with their staff, with their community, with the stakeholders. So, it's gonna be a very open campus. The pathways, the actual classes that we're gonna have there, as I mentioned, they are not offered in the other high schools. We didn't want to compete with the programs that are already established at the high schools. All these programs were chosen by a MITS assessment that was gathered from the economic development research, as well as surveys that we did for parents, business owners, students. So, all that together is what gave us really the top five, actually, pathways that we're gonna start at the academy. The first one, under healthcare, we do offer healthcare in all the other high schools, but this particular program will give students the opportunity to go beyond CNA. They'll go CNA, Patient Care Tech, which is what it's gonna be called, but they are also gonna come out of high school with credits towards their APM. Wellstart is being a huge partner on this because they need so many people. Right now, they have about 900 positions open just for nursing and nursing staff. So, we're gonna try to help them get more employees so we can fit that need. As far as energy, energy is a pathway that is in high demand, but there's only a handful of counties in the whole state of Georgia that actually offer that pathway. So, we're partnering with Greystone and Georgia Power, KALMC, and COBMC to develop the actual courses to get the students ready to do either if they wanna continue on as linemen, or if they wanna go on the engineering of the different tech type of jobs. So, they are directly involved into developing that program as well. As far as the third one, it's gonna be under advanced manufacturing. So, we have, with industrial maintenance and negatronics, we have very, very strong partnerships, actually, with Metro Mod, that actually Mr. Collette helped establish back in the day, and some other smaller business partners as well. We have TNR Fixtures, that is a very small manufacturing plant, LEMs, I think is what they built, or produce. We have WESCO Engineering. We have all the aerospace manufacturing companies as well. They are also working with us on developing these programs. And the last one, which is a very interesting one, because we didn't initially plan on starting that one, but based on the actual business feedback and all these big corporations, everybody needs cybersecurity right now. So, we are gonna start cybersecurity program as well, which will transition smoothly into Chanauchi Technical College cybersecurity program and go on to the Kennesaw program so the students can go as far as they want if they wish to. Now, a fourth program, a fifth program that was initially in our plans, and we had to kind of stop in a way, was HVAC. Our community felt that we needed to get our students ready in HVAC. However, some of the academies that we visited, they have beautiful labs, but it looks like their students are not very motivated to take those courses. So, what we have done to actually still offer this opportunity to students is we are partnering with the Barton College and Career Academy, which is already an established academy, and we are gonna bus our students over there so they can take the HVAC program if they still wish to do so, and we're gonna receive their students that wanna take in energy or cybersecurity if they don't have it yet. So, we established a very strong partnership right there with them, since from their academy to ours is basically 30 minutes, right? So, that's down from some of our students to their classroom. We are gonna have a lot of apprenticeships, registered, unregistered, paid and unpaid, internships, all kinds of things. And I just wanted to show you some of the already successes that we had with some of our partnerships, like the full branch that we have from Members First and Haron High School. It's just the second one in the whole state of Georgia, and you know, in the fall of 2016. We're looking for things like that that will give students real-life experience while in high school, so they can get ready for when they leave us. Our dual enrollment numbers have grown a lot since dual enrollment started in the state of Georgia with the funding that the governor actually funded to us for that. Well, we are hoping that with this Paulding College and Career Academy, this will even double, because we have some students that cannot provide their own transportation to the colleges. So, by having them in the academy, they will be able to take some of those dual enrollment classes that they cannot right now because of lack of transportation. And I'm not going fast, but I just, I wanted you to give you a quick overview. As you see in the map, and this logo that you see on the bottom right in all the presentation is actually the logo for the academy, that students, marketing students from the district developed. So, we're always, we're very proud of what our students produce. As you see, the academy would be somewhat central to all the five high schools, so that would be a very convenient location, as well as very quick ride to the post-secondary partners that we have, so that would be easy access. As far as impacting, we are hoping to connect the students to the businesses, to all the business partners before they graduate, so they can come up with possible job opportunities already. Of course, there has some experience that we spoke about in the post-secondary opportunities that we had, now will be expanded. That's like a very quick overview, and I will answer any questions you guys might have.
Mayoral, I want to thank you. You know, this is a program I follow into, and I love this program. You've done a great job. I hate that another county took Kelly home and away from us, 'cause he involved me into it, and I involved you. You've done a great job. Where are we with the candidates? The county actually hired someone to take Kelly's car?
Yes.
And I think on board. I feel kind of disconnected here.
Yes. We actually hired somebody right after that teacher left, and unfortunately, that teacher didn't stay with us long. So, because he left with a few weeks already into the school year, it was kind of harder to get somebody that was qualified and that was a good candidate to come and work, but we have that person now.
We need to get him.
Absolutely.
Is there a cap on the number of students related to our salary or...
We do have, once it's full, fully equipped and everything, we're hoping we'll have about 400. A shift, we're doing two shifts, morning and afternoon. So, basically, we'll touch about 800 students per semester.
But there's not a cap on dual enrollment?
Absolutely not.
Students going to West Georgia or wherever.
Oh, no.
Can you give us that presentation? Can you give that to Angela? Can you give that to Angela?
Absolutely.
Some of those numbers. Could you roll back in three slides to the numbers right there?
Uh huh.
So that's your dual enrollment?
Yeah, this is as it was this fall. This second semester is actually, the numbers have gone up quite a bit, but they're, we're still about that.
That's total district?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're hoping, like I said, I'm believing that the whole Pauling Polytechnic Career Academy will boost those numbers even more, because we'll have that extra location where the colleges can come in and teach those classes there. And those classes that we're planning on teaching at the Career Academy that are dual enrollment, they are not only just these career tech classes, we're also going to offer those core classes that the kids will need to keep on their degree.
Thanks so much, Ms. Perry.
Thank you so much.
Under bid awards, award the computer purchase to the lowest possible bidder, CBWG, in the amount of $164,600. Ms. Pollard?
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you remember, in the mid-2000s, we had a plan where we would retake our computers, and then we kind of halted that, and in 2013, 2014, we had to replace them all at one time. And to keep that happening again, we want to phase in again. So this is about 25%, a replacement for about 25% of our computers, and we'll expect to see approximately this amount in every budget for the next few years. And we are recommending award to CBW. CBW has provided our computers for quite some time, and they were the low bidder in this particular purchase. And we will deliver for if you have any questions.
Thank you. Did you hear some other good news?
I do, I do. I got some better news.
Better than the computers?
Better than the computers, yeah. A lot better. In the early 2000s, we were given a congressional mandate for about $3.2 million towards the reservoir. We attempted to spend that money for many, many years, well, for 15, 16 years, we attempted to spend that money. We were successful in 2016 to spend about half of it. And so we received about $890,000 back from some purchases that we'd made in the early 2000s, but because the reservoir wasn't under construction, it wasn't recognized as a project, so we got caught up in some federal requirements before we could spend that money. So it took about 15 years to reimburse us. Well, we have, and they made supply for the remainder amount. So we applied for it. I was a little skeptical as to whether it would stay with Pauling, but it did. We received our notice of award this morning for $1.7 million, which will be of 55, 45 grants, 55 federal and 45 county. We're going to be, like I said, with the award actually came in this morning, so we'll have more information to come back to you over the next couple of weeks, just for information.
Very good. Very good. We're not going to tell Kelly to come, though.
Yeah, we are going to.
Under reports from committees and departments, we're privileged to have this Mary Carol Jeffville, the county extension coordinator, to give us an update on Pauling County extension.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for having me here this morning. I'd like to give a little update on some of the things that have been going on during the year, every year about this time. And as I do, I like to kind of review kind of that we are cooperative extension. And a few years ago, we dropped the cooperative from our name, but we didn't drop the cooperative from what we do. And what makes us cooperative is partially our partnership with. So I work for the university, but I also work for Pauling County. And we also have some staff members who work for the Pauling County School District who work with our 4H and youth program. So we're truly cooperative in that way, and we're grateful for your continued support and for the collaborations that we're able to garner through our partnership with the county. So I was just going to highlight a few of the things that we have done this year, and I'm a school, it's just a page there, you can see. Kind of small up there, but it's just a print report. If anybody in the audience is interested, it will be posted on our Pauling County Extension website. But this year, we have our fantastic master gardeners who, every year, provide us a lot of volunteer support. And as of the first of the year, they have recorded 2,040 hours. This is a little low, but I think they have a little bit more tackling of master gardeners to do, and they have a little time on the state level to continue their recording. But that brings us a value, an estimated value of almost $50,000. It's like having an extra staff member. And all of those volunteers are well-trained, a lot of expertise in different areas. And I highlight that so that as I tell you about my programming efforts, you don't look at me and think, how in the world could she do all that? Because couldn't do all that without the partnership of these volunteers and their time to go and conduct programming along with me, either alongside me or in attendance with me in some cases. So in addition to their service, they also fund a local scholarship that's awarded to a local student. Almost every year, we try to find a local student who's going to study horticulture or agriculture or forestry, some related field. And we did order a $1,000 scholarship this year. So if you ever wonder why they're raising funds at that plant sale in Eight Dollar Bay, that's what they do with a good portion of that money in addition to funding their local projects. This year helped me to coordinate and conduct 199 programs and events relating to water conservation, and it would be impossible for me to do 199 events on my own. So these 30 people who volunteer with me make that really possible. 36 of those programs were directly related to water conservation, because that is a key component of what I see and what my program development team sees as a need in the county. So we work collaboratively with our water department, with our key Pauling beautiful unit, with the city of Dallas, to kind of figure out what those needs are and to try to address them through education and outreach. We also provide training for the landscape green industry. They need continuing education units for licenses that they hold. And those licenses, really, their expertise that relates to licenses also relate to soil and water quality for us. So by being able to provide those credits, we're able to also address soil and water conservation and maintain great water quality in our county. In addition to our ag programming, we have a great 4H program, one of the largest and most active in the state of Georgia, actually. We serve 2,228 4Hers monthly at club meetings. Some of those club meetings are in classrooms, some of those are specialty clubs with volunteers, our horse and pony club, our shooting sports teams, and other specialty clubs that are kind of related to our office through volunteer work or staff members. So this year, we had great success for some of our judging teams. Our poultry judging team placed first at the district, and then they took third at our state competition. Our forestry judging team was third at district and fifth at the state field day. Our big 4H program that we try to entice a lot of constituents into is the public speaking program. So they can take whatever their interest is and do a demonstration on that interest. We have 60 categories that they can participate in. And we had nine master 4Hers this year. And master 4Her, if you're not familiar, is a pretty big deal. These are kind of state winners in some round. Whether they gave a demonstration, two of them were masters in demonstrations, whether they were part of a team, and five of them were part of a team that not only won the state, but also went on to place third nationally. And then we had two who were another state competition, state winner, who were master 4Hers. So we had a great year with our 4H program. And what we're looking for, we're stepping in the new year, and we're off to the right on what we call project achievement, which is our public speaking contest. And we have almost 40 kids who are turning in portfolios today, wishing them an out, to start that process. So we're really proud of our 4Hers and the things they've done. We're really focused on community service as well, so they had a great activity this year. They always do pop tabs, they recycle them, and then they donate that money to their own McDonald's house. And we were first place in Northwest District for pop tab collections for the work of our students. We also have worked with our team like Consumer Science Agents nearby to provide some programming on Downy Consumer Science. And I know that you guys heard from Susan Culpepper last year, and she nominated Jeff Bree Harkins and Joey Martin for an award for a collaboration that they did. And that went on to getting a national award as well through the Professional Association for her work with them on Grandma's Healthier Pot Pie, which you may have seen on our local cable channel. We have, or you can look that up. And we also facilitated an online Walk Georgia Challenge with board commissioner staff and the local community, and helped our HR here at Pauling County Board Commissioners do a little bit of wellness programming on gardening and on fitness. And so we had a really great year. And if you have any questions, happy to answer them. And again, it's really grateful, very cool.
Here, Kelly, I noticed that there was a very intelligent group in the audience that looked like MGs, Mr. Gardeners.
That's it, yeah.
Maybe we could add them, say?
Yes. Master Gardeners stood up, they're kind of dispersed a little bit, there's a few of them here.
Thank you so much.
If there's work. We have no one who has signed up for public participation on agenda items under the consent agenda. There's action on seven consent agenda items. Number one is to appoint and confirm Mr. Bobby Hollis as the Board of Commissioners nomination to the Water and Sewer Advisory Board with a term ending 12/31/2018. Number two, adopt resolution 18-01 approving properties change in the granting and accepting of real property between Pauling County and Christopher and Lorraine Lee's for the Pauling County Reservoir Project, as in post forward. Number three is to adopt resolution 18-02 amending resolutions 14-16 Pauling County Road Naming and Honorary Designation Policy, Section 4.7, about time limit of honorary designation. Number four is to appoint Ms. Pat Dukin Raystraw to the Pauling County Library Board of Trustees to fill the unexpired term, Mr. Roberto Jesus, with a term ending February 13, 2019. Number five is to reappoint Lieutenant Mark Nedke to the Region One Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council for a term ending December 31, 2019. Number six is to approve the renewal of the MOU memorandum of the understanding between Pauling County and the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia. On behalf of the University of Georgia Cooperative Extension, no additional support is required. And finally, number seven is to appoint Mr. Robert Kraus and Mr. Joy, and Ms. Joy Hendrick to serve on the West Georgia Joint Department Authority with a term ending December 31, This time, I entertain a motion if any of our boards would like to move any of those consent agendas to regular business. Hearing none, we will keep them as consent agenda items, and we move on to old business. Discuss action to adopt resolution 17-42A, reappointing John McBurns to the Pauling County Board of Assessors for a term ending December 31, 2020. This was tabled from December 12, 2017, Board Commissioners meeting. And number two, discuss action to adopt resolution 17-42B, reappointing Arthur L. Fulbright to the Pauling County Board of Assessors for a term ending December 31, 2020. This was also tabled from December 12, 2017, Board Commissioners meeting. Under new business, discuss action to approve funds for off-season litter pickup services with Love &amp; Contracting Company Incorporated in the amount of $154,000. Mr. Jones to report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This agenda item is to provide funding for litter pickup services for 550 miles of county roads, up to four cycles of off-season litter pickup. The work was approved on the March 14, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting, however, the funding was delayed with the idea to use the FY 2018 budget funds for this work. The cost is $70 per mile, $38,500 per round for a total up to $154,000. I can answer any questions if you have any, I hope.
I think Love &amp; Contractors is doing a great job. Watched them work through the bad weather we've had the last six weeks. They are non-stop, and I think it's one of the best things we've done. I'm sure that we don't have any of our citizens littering. I'm sure it's other people driving through the county, but this is a cost of picking up litter.
It's the cost of doing business exactly. We want to keep it to this standard.
It is, and we've still got a long way to go. We've preached about it for, I know, seven years, and we've got to continue to see what we can do to look for more ways to get it picked up, citizens participating. But this is another cost of picking up litter on our roads, and it's got, it's got to be done in order to have our community look good for somebody to want to come in here and open a business and live, and the whole nine yards. But I think that company's doing a great job. I've watched them out there on the roads, working, and they, if it's madder, rain and cold or anything else, they're out there doing their job.
Exactly. Last Sunday, they were out, it was 8:00 in the morning, they were picking up trash up on East Pauling Drive. They're very flexible to work with. As a department, we have a good working relationship, and we'd like to keep it going.
Well, I appreciate the Board Commissioners' support in this, and I hope that will continue.
Me too. I think I had a taxpayer ask me, said, when is off-season litter?
I guess there is no off-season in theory for litter, but I guess we have an on-season where we did the grass study, so we consider the off-season where you're not cutting grass.
I wish we had an off-season.
Me too.
We can have an off-season.
We need to.
I think that's a pet peeve for all of us, and I would just encourage, any of you have any out-of-the-box ideas how to deal with litter in our county, to let us know.
Tell you what, you get your kids out there picking up litter like we do, they'll learn that there's no way they're going to litter. There, and my 20-year-old says, Dad, I want to get ahold of them. I want to know who's litter, who's doing this. I mean, you get them out there picking it up, and they see what's out there that they're picking up back. So anyway, to the citizens that are doing that, thank you. To our road department that's doing that, to the Board of Commissioners and to the staff for supporting this, just let's keep going. I mean, we're doing it at every angle we can, whether it's state prisoners, whether it's local prisoners, groups or anything else. But get out and pick up the litter in front of your house, in the house on each side of you, and we can get this thing conquered. It's got to keep, it's a constant battle.
It definitely is.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
Then there's a number two, discuss action to adopt the resolution 18-03 establishing the qualifying fees for local offices and authorizing the publication of the same. We had Mr. Dieter Holden in the room, but she wants to comment on that.
Yeah, she wants me to do it. This is a resolution that we do every election year. It establishes what the qualifying fees are for the different local offices. In this case, there's only two, which is the post commissioners, which is $675, and school board members, which is $100. And then it asks Dieter Holden to publish those and set them up for the election dates, which this year is qualifying is Monday, March 5, through Friday, March 9 at noon. And the primary is May 22, and the general election is November 6.
Thank you, Dieter, for your leadership in that department and line for sharing that with us. That would be the conclusion of regular business. We do have executive session for personnel and pending and potential litigation. We have no citizens who have signed up to speak on non-agenda items. So we'll thank you all for being here today, and we've asked for a motion that we go into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session for personnel ending any particular litigation.
Have a motion in a second. Motion by Mr. Pennell, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five of them, we'll go into executive session. Good afternoon, and I'll bring the work session meeting, call it back to order, and we have taken some action. And we have taken some action, so get a statement on that action, please.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to add to the Jennifer, a two o'clock meeting. That'll be the motion to appoint and confirm Frank Baker as the interim chief marshal.
We have a motion, I have stated by Christopher Davis is our second.
Second.
Motion is a second by, and any discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five of them.
We need to tell our department heads too that we're going to be able to start earlier than we thought, but maybe 2:15?
So the regular session meeting will convene at 2:15 and we'll be a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.